Garza.
Here.
Mayors.
Here.
Gups.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Bass.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. You supply our needs daily. So, Lord, we take this time to thank you. Thank you for meeting all of our needs. Lord, we pray for our governing body as they seek to make decisions that are in the best interests of the people of Hutchinson. And, Lord, we continue to seek your guidance as staff to do your will and to do what's best as well. Lord, thank you. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda?
No, I don't have any questions.
Motion and second.
Move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
All second.
Rule call.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item number five A. Consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district for the downtown Hudson's Rod Run event.
Paul Brown, city attorney. You had before you proposed a resolution to approve a special event for this year's Rod Run on October four and five. Jim Gruber is here and he's ready to roll if we'll just give him a district to operate in. So I'd ask the council to approve the resolution.
Well, I'm okay with that. You want to advertise your event at this time?
I'll say a little something.
All right.
We've got a tight agenda, so.
Thank you.
We just really appreciate all of the help the city gives us every year. Seventeen years, it's piling up. It's hard to believe that it's been that long already, but we keep having good events and we're planning on having another one this year. Any questions at all? I'd be glad to answer anything, but.
I'm excited that it's here again. I'm excited that you're working with the same people and some new people to make this thing go off like it always does.
We definitely got some young, I call them kids, on our board now that hopefully will keep this going long after I'm gone, so.
Very good.
That sounds great. We appreciate it, everything.
All right.
I would move to approve a resolution to authorize a special event in designated entertainment district pursuant to City Code Section 18801 for the downtown Hutchinson Rod Run event and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups. Bass.
Yes. Yes.
Consider resolution authorizing the sale of $4,340,000 general obligation bond Series 2024A and $1,615,000 general temporary notes.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. At prior meetings this year, you had approved ordinances for reimbursement of expenses to bond projects totaling $4,340,000, sorry, $4,340,000 for these projects. The resolution that's before you right now is to authorize the sale of general obligation bonds for these projects and also to authorize general temporary notes for the Plum Creek infrastructure that you'll hear the bid results for later in the meeting. So we are ready to accept those bids and temp note if those are, if the bids are accepted. The next two items on the agenda relate to this in that while we were preparing to bond this, we realized bonding costs may be higher. So first on the agenda is to approve the resolution to start the bonding process and then the next two items will amend prior ordinances to authorize higher bonding because of those projected bonding costs. The bond sale is scheduled to be October 15th with a council approval on October 16th and then we anticipate to close the bonds on November 12th. One of the items that you might be thinking about is why am I not waiting until we find out what's going to happen with the atrium to bond that project with these as well? According to our legal counsel, will probably be taxable. General obligation bonds, these are tax exempt, so it would have to be a different sale in either case. So that is why that's not before you right now and why I didn't wait for that project. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No.
I've read the summary.
Okay, do you have a motion and second?
I move to approve resolution authorizing the sale of $4,340,000 general obligation bonds Series 2024A and $1,615,000 general temporary notes and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Yes.
Bass. Yes.
Item C. Consider ordinance amending ordinance authorizing general obligation bonds for certain improvements.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. This ordinance is going to amend the ordinance that included the zoo improvements, fire training center improvements, the Fun Valley turf, and the Bad Bobby trailhead. We had prior authorized $3,160,000. We're asking that we amend this ordinance to allow $3,180,000. Staff recommends approval.
Which item came in higher? Or is it a mixture?
It's, it's the total package because what we do is we take the fees from legal counsel, bonding counsel, the fees assessed by the state, and we spread that over the total projects. So it's just that those costs are coming in higher than we had anticipated with the prior ordinance. And part of that could have been because we anticipated bonding more projects with these, you know, to get a bigger package and then to spread out the bonding costs over more projects. But we're ready to bond these projects and the next projects we're going to bond probably won't be until spring.
It's, it's not the project cost, it's the bonding cost itself.
Exactly.
3.18 versus 3.16?
Yes.
All right. All right. Do you have a motion and second for that?
I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the ordinance authorizing general obligation bonds for certain improvements and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Item D. Consider ordinance revising ordinance authorizing replacement of 16th and Baker Bridge.
Okay, so prior in the year, we had done an ordinance to authorize the 16th and Baker Bridge for $1,155,000. Now we're asking to revise that ordinance for 1.2 million for the same reasons that we did the prior ordinance. We just happened to do this one in a separate ordinance, so we're amending it in a separate ordinance.
So we're, what is the, what is the cause for us miscalculating the bonding costs on these?
I'm not exactly sure. I haven't talked to our bond counsel about that. I was out of the office last week when this came to my attention, so. I, I think, as I said before, it's probably because they anticipated us bonding it with like a stormwater project or something as well.
This is Kootak Rock?
No, it would be Piper Sandler.
Is this something we need to keep in mind for, is this something that could bite us again down the road or is this a one-time-only unforeseen issue now or is it something that we need to keep in mind for?
In the time I've been here for almost nine years, this is the first time I've had to amend an ordinance authorizing a project. Yes, so I will talk to them and find out what happens.
I mean, I know the cost, the cost difference isn't a whole lot in the scheme of things, but I just want to make sure this isn't something that's going to snowball in other projects. He feels like I do.
Kind of hard to swallow.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Any other comments? Motion and second, please.
I'd make a motion to approve an ordinance revising, ordinance authorizing replacement of the 16th and Baker Bridge and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Bass.
Yes. Bass.
Item number six A. Consider Kansas SRF loan agreement for 2024 water distribution system improvement and sign the original grant for our agreement.
Good evening. Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works. Back on October 17th of 2023, the council approved a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the loan application for a waterline replacement project. This project involves the replacement of, let's see, get another map up here. So this project involves the replacement of approximately 1.4 miles of six-inch cast iron waterline. It's located generally between Ninth and Seventeenth Avenue and between Maple and Cochrane. Those waterlines were installed between 1922 and 1961 and have had a combined 82 waterline breaks on that series of 1.4 miles in their lifespan. To fund this project, the city of Hutchinson is seeking a loan of 1.2 million from the Kansas State Revolving Fund with an estimated principal forgiveness of $600,000. The estimate, that leaves an estimated net loan of $600,000 at an interest rate of 2.36% and the loan duration is for up to 20 years. Our proposed schedule for this project, we submitted plans to KDHE back in early August. We expect approval of those plans and specifications to be done around the first of February, which means we'll be opening bid somewhere in mid-March with construction beginning around mid-June and wrapping up towards the end of November. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Are these loan numbers the same as when you presented to us at the beginning of this project coming?
So back last October?
Yeah.
So we didn't have the fine-tuned numbers at that point, so it is different. We weren't sure how much principal forgiveness we were going to get, if any, so this is good news to get half of it forgiven. And the 2.36, again, we just weren't sure what the interest rates we're going to do. But I think it's around 40 to 50% of the, of the normal interest rates that we would get otherwise.
And is this on track to what we talked about earlier? 1.4 miles per year? That's, that's what we talked about, I believe, last year to try to keep up or catch up with some of our replacement?
Yeah, so we're slowly building. Ideally, I'd like to be replacing three to three and a half miles a year. That's really where we need to be in order to start catching up to replacing some of that aging infrastructure and helping correct the number of water main breaks. But it's also, you know, the affordability of our water rates is also important, so trying to walk that balance and have, you know, rate increases that are affordable and still have enough money and revenue generated so that we can invest in our infrastructure. So we're slowly building and over the next three to five years, I see us getting close to that three miles a year.
Does, and I can't remember, we may have asked this last October, does that interest rate move or is it fixed once this is set in motion?
It's fixed once we sign this agreement.
You make the word of forgiveness, so half of it's forgiven, so actually what we're going to put out is 1.3, is that right?
So the project cost is 1.2 and the bonds for 1.2, but we'll only have to take out a loan for $600,000.
Well, I'm excited that maybe there'll be less waterline breaks. People will be able to move about freely around town. Seems like we have an awful lot of those. Anyway, any other discussion?
Yeah, one other question. This section of town, how we're, we're rotating through with the repaving. I can't think of the, it's been a long day. The repaving, we're not like repaving and then digging this up to put these, to make the waterline repairs, are we? These will be completed after or long before those repairs are made?
Right, so we do try to coordinate those as best we can. The new waterlines are going to go behind the back of curb, so there shouldn't be a lot of construction in the streets. Now where we tie in, that will be, but we're trying to minimize the amount of streets that we have to tear up with these projects.
Appreciate that. I think you mentioned that one other time when we were talking about that, how important that is, that we want to be efficient with our dollars and not rebuild streets twice. Any other comments? Motion and second on that?
I moved, I moved to approve an ordinance revising, excuse me, I moved, moved to accept and approve the SRF loan agreement for the 2024 waterline replacement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Item six B. Consider agreement for engineering services with JEO consultants for Woody Seat Bridge over KNO Railroad and Avenue C.
So during our council meeting back on August 6th of this year, council received an update on the Woody Seat project and after some discussion decided or directed staff to proceed with the rehab of the Woody Seat Bridge over Avenue C and the, and the KNO railroad tracks with the goal being to complete that rehab while that stretch of road is shut down for Phase Two of the Woody Seat reconstruction project. So attached to this agreement is, attached is an agreement with JEO consultants for the design of that bridge rehabilitation. And we selected JEO without going through a formal selection process based on several reasons. One, they've done a really good job on past bridge projects. Two, they're very familiar with this particular bridge and this project. And three, the time constraints. So the formal selection typically takes anywhere from six to eight weeks and this agreement proposes to have final plans complete within 40 calendar days. And that timing is really critical if we want any chance of trying to complete this bridge repair while Woody Seat is closed with the Phase Two construction. So the agreement with JEO consultants is an hourly not-to-seat contract with a total value of $44,260. Brad Shores with JEO is in the audience tonight and either he or I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I know this was unexpected, but I, I mean, I've looked at it, it, I'm not sure how it was unexpected, but what, what's going to be the procedure and any idea how much it's going to cost in addition to Phase Two? I mean, I know how much your fee is going to be.
Yeah, so we're, we're very early in the construction cost estimates, but our upper estimate is 1.2 million.
Just for C?
Just for the bridge for C.
That's just upper, it could go much lower than that. A lot lower than that.
I don't know about a lot lower, but that's what we're hoping is the upper range.
Today's trends say otherwise.
I do want to note that this does not close down access to South Hutchinson. This is just, like a lot of people have been concerned that we're going to close down access to South Hutch on that bridge again. This does not do that. You can still access, Avenue F access.
That's what'll be different about this construction. We won't have everything funnelled over the Frank Hart Crossing. Still looking at springtime for all of this?
I believe so, yeah. The construction, I believe, well, they're hoping to bid Woody Seat project here towards the end of this year. So yeah, that would mean construction starting next spring.
The only thing I do want to add is we are somewhat at the mercy of the railroad, so we're moving as fast as we possibly can so that they can do their review and that we have the chance to let this as a separate contract from the rest of Woody Seat as to, but at the same time, so even we have to let it, you know, a month later, I just want to say that we cannot, we cannot promise the same timeline. I can promise that we will have the plans and we'll be ready to bid in 40 days. I cannot promise what the railroad review will be. They've told us they're going to work with us. We've already talked to them a couple few times and they've been responsive, but that's beyond our control.
Good. I think we may have a better contact with the railroad these days than we had previous days, probably not this department, but hopefully we can get to the right people and get it all streamlined. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to this? I know there's some folks that care a lot about the Woody Seat and what's going on. I want to be sure that as we go through these agenda items, if somebody has something to say, reference these things, that we give you the opportunity to speak on these items. All right.
I have a question. So you're saying that the railroad has to give their final approval before it goes out to bid?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is going to be just a standard rehab of the bridge? Sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, we're not replacing the bridge, but it's a, it's a pretty significant rehab. I mean, 1.2 million, we're doing a lot of work to the bridge and it, it will, it will encroach on their vertical clearance to their railroad, so they have a right to review. It's their right of way, so we have to work with them.
It'll temporarily encroach or it will permanently?
Temporarily, correct.
Okay, just during construction?
Correct.
The construction of that phase?
Of just the bridge.
Not the construction of the rest of it?
Correct. Yep.
So it's anticipated that it wouldn't be too much of a hassle for them, that it wouldn't cause any major disruption to their operations?
Yeah, we're, we've identified a construction technique that we think minimizes the impact. We believe they can maintain jack operations with a slightly reduced vertical clearance through there. So I'm hopeful that they see that as a positive and not as a huge negative and, and that it shouldn't be a big obstacle, but we still have to work with them.
Yeah, and when you send it for their review, do they give you a timeline or any sort of expectation of when you'll hear back?
He indicated that he will try to give us a timeline estimate, yes.
He being not the decision maker.
It's his team and he could not guarantee that the timeline would necessarily be followed.
Great. All right, any other discussion about this?
I move to accept and approve the agreement for engineering services with JEO consultants for Woody Seat Bridge over KNO Railroad and Avenue C.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Mayors.
Yes.
Gups.
Bass.
Yes. Bass.
Item C. Consider report on bids for Plum Creek subdivision Phase One, project 145 Plum Creek.
Evening, council. Justin Karam, Construction Manager, City of Hutchinson Engineering Department. Introduce this project a little bit, even though it's familiar with everybody. Purpose of this project is to build the needed infrastructure to support the new Plum Creek subdivision. Phase One of the subdivision will include 21 single-family houses and eight duplex units. The project, this project will construct streets, water mains, sanitary sewer, stormwater facilities, and sidewalk ramps. Engineering consultants, PA, completed the design for this project for strong development. Some information on the bid, a total of one bid was opened on July 9th. The low bid was received from APAC Kansas in the amount of $1,862,143.76. The bid is above the provided engineer's estimate. I believe we received a favorable bid for the market and competitive bid. APAC Kansas is currently working on and has completed other similar work for the city of Hutch, including Woody Seat Phase One, our ongoing 2023 waterline replacement project, as well as our 48-inch diameter sewer main improvement at the wastewater treatment plant. The city engineering department will provide construction administration and inspection services for this project. It is recommended that the council approve bids and award the project to APAC Kansas in the amount of $1,862,143.76.
Uh, it is recommended that the council approve bids and award the project to APAC Kansas in the amount of one million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Now answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Was there anything in the bid that stood out as a line item that was grossly over price compared to the engineer's estimate?
Uh, I would say the mobilization came in a little bit higher for each, uh, piece of the project. So that was a majority of what I, what I could see was the increased costs. Um, Strawn has elected to, uh, do the sidewalks himself, uh, which he's allowed to per city code. So once this is approved, we'll go through a change order process with APAC and remove that quantity. So it'll be about a hundred thousand dollars less than what you see here. But to adjust it now would require a rebid, so that's why we're gonna do it after the agreement's executed.
Was there anything in the bid that would've caused us to only get one bid on the project or is?
I think I would, my assumption would be the timeline that we have to get this done, uh, is a short timeframe to get everything lined up. Uh, we do have some concerns about materials getting in time, uh, so, because there is a lift station that some of those items take about six months to get. So I think timeframe is the biggest factor that I could see.
Okay, I can see the lift station's over a hundred thousand dollars higher than what was estimated.
And a reminder of this, these estimate numbers came from engineering consultants, so.
Just get it clear, mobilization means movement of the equipment.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, it's getting your equipment aside, getting your people aside, uh, the daily truck, uh, visits. Uh, it's kind of where we see a lot of contractors put their profit as well, uh, because it's not, that won't change with the projects. So that's usually where mobilization includes a lot of their profit.
All right. Well, I see you're here, Mr. Strawn. Do you have a comment related to this item?
Yeah, there's really, uh, there's not a lot this time. There's a couple of other areas we're looking at working on, but there's nothing that you brought up right now.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
I don't have any, I don't have any more questions on this.
All right, motion second.
I move to accept the bid of one million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents from APAC of Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Item number seven, proclamations.
All right, we'll do the National Hispanic Heritage Month first. I see several folks here that could certainly join me. Whereas the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas the theme for the two thousand twenty-four National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, is pioneers of change, shaping the future together, which invites us to recognize the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic, political, and social growth of the United States. And whereas Kansas's state agencies are becoming more culturally sensitive and more accessible, creating materials that better meet the needs of the Latino and Hispanic community, including offering materials in Spanish. And whereas Hispanic and Latinos have participated in the growth and development of our state and county through their labor that continues to this day. And whereas Hutchinson's Hispanic population is estimated at thirteen percent. While the national population of Hispanics is estimated at sixty-two million people, representing nineteen percent of the total population, recognized as the largest ethnic minority in the nation. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family faith, hard work, and service. And they have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, do wanna accept this on behalf of the Human Relations Office. Um, one of the things that we strive to do here in Hutchinson is to make sure that this is a community where everyone not only feels like they can belong, but also they thrive. If we're going to do that, then we do have to take into consideration the contributions of our Hispanic and Latin communities that make Hutchinson what it is. And so I want to pause now just to introduce Ms. Cindy Flores and some of her team from the Southwest Bricktown neighborhood that are gonna share information, um, about the upcoming Hispanic Heritage Month Festival, um, that does begin later on in the month.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cindy Flores and I am a member of the Southwest Bricktown. I wanna take the opportunity to invite everybody to our annual event, which will happen on September twenty-first. It's gonna be from five o'clock to eleven. Come out and dance with us. There's gonna be street dance, two bands. We've got food vendors and lots of activities for the kids. So I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Esmeralda Tovar with Hutch and Harmony. I'm so excited to be here to honor Hispanic Heritage Month with all of you. Though we honor it year-round, it's important to note that from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, it is nationally recognized across our country to celebrate and honor the contributions, histories, and cultures of our Mexican, Spanish, Caribbean, Central American, and South American communities. September fifteenth marks Costa Rica, El Salvador, Nicaragua, Guatemala, and Honduras's Independence Day. Mexican Independence Day is September sixteenth, and Chile's Independence Day is September eighteenth. Dia de la Raza is on October twelfth. Hispanic Heritage Month is a reminder to all of us that we are a country with diverse traditions, thanks to the communities that have kept our heritage alive, generation after generation. Anytime that you attend a Southwest Bricktown Fiesta, eat a fresh Ankeran tortilla, a burrito mexicano from Saloyense, tacos al pastor from El Patio, eat breakfast or brunch at daybreak, antojitos el barbas, or el rodeo. Learn more about what a star bond project is and move forward with it. Need help with translations? Here's six twenty in the mix. Get your makeup done at my salon. Grab delicious pastries from La Poblinita. Update your passport with the mobile consulate. Get help with renewing your deferred action. The list goes on. You're seeing people putting their passions to work, seen and unseen, and loving this community. May we continue to work together to bring more people to the table and feel welcome in Reno County. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you here that don't know, Cindy, Esmeralda, they do so much work behind the scenes. Um, I get to spend some time with Cindy and she's constantly translating for a company that she works for. And I'm, I'm assuming just helping folks get stuff done that they can't because they don't speak English. So thank you for your work in that area. I, I think that nobody really knows how much you do. I don't even know that. But, but there's a lot that goes on, at least when I'm around you guys, so thank you. The next proclamation for National Recovery Month. Thomas Sim- Simmons? Gary Race?
Yeah.
All right. Whereas the misuse of alcohol and illicit substances costs our country hundreds of billions of dollars every year. And we also see the devastating cost on equality of life and mobility that even rural Americans in Kansas is not immune to. And whereas the impacts stretch from families to the workforce, from schools to the medical community and feel the, all the effects. And whereas recovery is a process of change through which people improve their health and wellness, build resilience, live self-centered lives, and strive to reach their full potential by better, better managing health, home, purpose, and community. And whereas the Reno Recovery Collaborative is one of the local resources for recovery and resilience-based services. And whereas that by a building, that by building a durable network of community partners from the medical and behavioral health sector, social services, law enforcement persons with lived experience, and Oxford Houses, the Reno Recovery Collaborative partners are poised to offer and refer families the means to build resilience, offsetting the effects of adverse childhood experiences and reduce, reducing the public cost of substance use disorder. And whereas Hutchinson and all of Reno County has been leading the charge in promoting a thriving recovery community by giving support and understanding, instilling in the hearts and minds of our children that there is hope, that all can live a happy, healthy life, and that recovery is possible. Now therefore, I Greg Fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand twenty-four, National Recovery Month.
My name's Thomas Simmons. I work at the Reno County Health Department. Um, I'm also the chair of the Reno County, uh, the Reno Recovery Collaborative, as was mentioned in the proclamation. Another thing that it mentioned in here was a lot of the people that we have at the table in that collaborative. Um, the idea is to get people from the community together at the same table in three focal areas. And that's education and prevention, treatment and healthcare, and recovery and recovery supports. We get people from the community together to discuss gaps in the community and then options and ideas that we explore on how to fill those gaps. Community is a very effective survival tool that we've used for centuries. So that's the goal that we have here, um, and we're trying to make it a safer, better, more understanding place for people with substance use disorder and for their families. Thank you.
All right, next item.
Item number eight, oral communications from Niony.
Well, we are here to listen and if you just keep your comments to five minutes or less, be happy to hear what, uh, what you might have to say. Please state your name and the city you live in.
My name is Annette Roberson and I live in the city of Hutchinson in Larkland.
Okay.
So, um, our little area is about a little, a little over two hundred homes in that neighborhood. And, um, one of the things that I've really focused on in there is a sense of community within our city. And, um, on September twenty-first, just like these ladies, which I'll be sure and tell everyone to come to your events after ours, um, we'll have our neighborhood garage sale and, um, a potluck at our home. A couple of nights ago, this last weekend, um, two fire trucks came out and were parked in front of our home and, um, the lights and, of course, not the sirens. It was around two, two-thirty in the morning. And, um, I woke, uh, my husband up and had him go check, 'cause he doesn't see or hear anything. But, um, I was really concerned about it because the firemen weren't sure where they were needing to go. And, um, what we could hear is an address check. And so my concern is, I wanna probably start with my neighborhood, but I wanna know something about some way to consistently make those addresses pop out to people. There aren't a lot of street signs in that, or street lights in that area. So when we go on our walks at like four o'clock in the morning, um, we see a few of them that are white. The little block right on the curb's white with black letters, but there's a street light to illuminate that. And our home does have a lit-up, um, sign out front with the street, um, address on it. 'Cause my, my husband lost his, his, his dad in, in the very same situation. It gets a little confusing in that neighborhood. And I'm sure ours isn't the only neighborhood. So I would like to consider that, that maybe we could look into a way to make, um, addresses for homes consistent and, um, help the, the rescue people find the people that need help.
All right. Thank you. We will, I think it is in our code, i- is it Paul that we have?
It is, yes.
Four-inch letters.
Four-inch letters, wow. Very good. Well, I know that is, is, is a struggle for our police and fire. And for a couple of us up here that own businesses that go look at houses, we can't find exactly what, i- it is a problem and.
But I'd be happy to start with those two hundred in my area. I'd be happy to. Um, that would be a start.
Yeah. No, there used to be a, a group that came by, and I think for five bucks they would spray, spray paint your curb.
Sure, but do they, I mean, if it's not consistent for everyone, those folks are looking for places.
And then some, you could upgrade to a special one, but I think the point is, I think our code says it has to be on the house.
So maybe it's just a matter of how I can help them and then we can branch out from there. But I think it's really important. That's just one situation where someone was probably tied up, you know, three or four minutes. And that, that can make, I mean, when you're doing CPR, you'll be exhausted in that amount of time.
And I appreciate your concern and your willingness to help, so, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this, uh, Jim Strawn, I, uh, was here a couple of weeks ago and I told you I'd try and come back after I met with the county. So I did have a, uh, I was called to a meeting after I contacted Randy. Um, I'm just trying to think of his name, but part, not partisan, but anyway, the ci- uh, county administrator. So we were, we all met. We had, uh, Mayor Fast and city manager, and we had some folks from the county. And myself, the Chamber of Commerce were there. And so we were talking about housing because that seemed to be, uh, a pretty big item that people are really concerned about now that they think that we really don't have enough housing. And I'm not here to say whether we have enough housing or whether we don't have enough housing. But, uh, anyway, the meeting went pretty well at the, at the Chamber of Commerce. And I, and I believe that it seems to be one of the biggest things that people are looking at now is trying to figure out, making sure that we could have houses for people to, to live in Hutchinson and not have to travel. That's been our objective. So anyway, we, I went away from that meeting feeling pretty good about things. And, and it felt like everybody was on the same, somewhat on the same train. And, um, so after that, I went to the county and I asked to see if we could be looking at any funds available for our subdivision like the city, uh, got for theirs. So we had a long conversation there and, and Randy Partington, uh, did, uh, and, and the, and the city county, um, um, council decided that, that they would consider it, and so they're gonna try and put something together. So I was very appreciative. I'm not saying that that is gonna happen. But then the county asked if the city was gonna participate in any of that. And I said, well, you know, the, the county and the city's participating in the RHID, in which I really do appreciate. And, and then the, uh, uh, city said that they would go ahead and put the lift station. You, you could see what we had for a bid on a, on a, on a project that I wasn't expecting those kind of dollars to come out. But we had a lift station that was, I'm thinking it came in around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the time, like, you got all, all the bits and pieces to it. And, and the city has been very good about letting us set that up on specials, assessments. Um, but at the end of the day, we are still out on, on our end of, of my, of what I'm spending. You know, I, I'm, I'm well over, uh, I believe it's three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, plus I have, uh, to pay for inspections, underground electric, underground gas, land, all that. Where in days past, in the his- in the history of Hutchinson, we were able to put everything out on special assessments before, um, before it went up. Uh, and then, and then our specials would just be what they would. And, but on this particular, with the RHID, um, the, the city put a limit on what they And, but on this particular, with the RHID, the, the city put a limit on what they would spend to how the, how they would get their money back. And it's a little bit complicated, but anyway, I did ask the city to see if they would be interested in, in possibly helping me fund some things like the inspections that, that the city provides, because they did say that they would provide the inspections, which should save us money. And, and so I guess they, right, right now, they're, they're not thinking that they want to participate. So I guess, other than that, then the only thing that I guess I'm here to ask for today is I'm looking to ask for some direction, and what, what direction the city thinks that they're gonna go with the land that they have already purchased. And I know that they've had a Wichita surveyor out there and surveyed this land. So I'm supposing they're gonna start topographical surveys and a site plan. So all, all I'm really wanting to do is try and figure out who, who it would be that I would talk to that's gonna know the absolute most about the direction that the City of Hutchinson plans on going with this piece of land. All I hear is they're gonna put an RFP out for developers, or builders, or whatever. And, and man, I didn't look at the clock. I don't know how I am on my five minutes. But anyway, I, I, I don't know where that stands. And all I'm trying to do is, you know, I'm really look, trying to figure out what's gonna be coming my way in the future. Because I know something's gonna be coming. And, and it will be competition. So, city claims it's not them. All I know is they own the land, and they're hiring people to get things done. And that's kind of what I do. So, that being said, it is interesting, though, how many people are, are, you know, this is a big thing, the housing. I have a, I have a lot of experience with this. And I see Jim Groover in the crowd. I did not know he was gonna be here. I'm glad to see him here. Jim's another developer here in Hutchinson that's done, done, done a lot of work here. And I've talked to other developers as well. And, and so if you all would ever like to talk about it, you know, you could pick up the phone and call me. No one bothered to call me when the city was thinking about doing something like this, but that's my five minutes, so.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? With that, I think we'll move to council comments. Mr. Garza?
Yes. I'd like to let everybody know, last, on the twenty-fourth of August, the founders had their picnic and went really well. Other than it being extremely hot out there, they had a slide for the kids down there. If I was a little guy, I probably would've got on it. It was cool. Went down there and they hit the water, and it was good. The whole picnic went real well. So next year, when we have the founders picnic, try to come out there and see what's going on. Also, the, this month's coming on the twenty-first is the Bricktowns thing. And you know me, I love the Mexican music, and I love the dancing. So come on out there and see what it's about, and have a good time with this bandics and everybody. I see everybody out there, so come on out there and see that. Other than that, I'd like to say, the biggest thing I'd like to say is thank you for coming out to our evening meetings. I think this would be great, so we can get people to come out. Right now, I see a, a group of people that I haven't seen before, and come on out. I mean, I think this is great. You get to see what's going on. And the biggest thing is, I think, one of the main topics we did this, as far as I'm concerned, I think one of the other council members said that, is getting more people involved in running, to be a council member. So the excuse of you don't have time, or you don't, you can't get off work is gone. Now you have a chance to become a council member. It's at night. And, and maybe we'll have more candidates running for the council. So other than that, I appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you.
All right, John?
Kansas State Fair starts here pretty quick. I hope everyone has a good time at the fair. Fun and safe, and promote it to all your friends and family from outside of Hutchinson to come. And try to explore things other than the state fair while you're here, so it gives them reason to come back some other time in the year. Don't distract from the fair. Just tell them, or give them another reason to come back later on. That's all I got.
Maybe be patient with your travels across town, those of you that live here.
Oh, and stop at the stoplight at the fire station, and keep in mind how the road is marked, so you're not parked in front of there right of way.
Yes. Stacy?
Is it Mike's turn or his turn?
I believe we were going apparent, maybe, is it Scott's turn?
I thought it was your turn.
It's your turn.
Okay.
I think it goes from right to left. No, because they're doing something with the IT. Okay.
I don't have...
I don't make the rules. I try to follow them.
I don't have a lot to add. I think everybody's touched on it, especially, please stop at the, please stop at the stoplight on Main Street. I know they're temporary and they're a pain, and then we're gonna have the road closures, but they're all intended to keep everybody safe. Especially when people will be, it's just, they're put up early to prepare us for the, the street traffic that will happen soon. And I appreciate you coming tonight. As a small business owner, when I owned my company, that was a huge issue for me as well, trying to find people's addresses in the dark, because no one's house is marked the same. And it always bothered me knowing that it was putting people at risk. And it is a code. It is written into our code. It could be stronger, it could be written differently. It could be stronger or better enforced, but it is a concern, and I'm curious to hear. Maybe we can reach out to our EMS and law enforcement officers to figure out what the impact of that has on them and their response time. I would hate to hear that, that it was significant for even just one, one person or for one family would be too much. So thank you for coming, and that's all I have today.
Well, with that, I don't have a whole lot to say either. So I did want to thank Brian for reaching, reaching out to the email received in the panorama area. Still trying to get all that resolved up there, and according to Brian, we ordered the temporary traffic circle products last Monday. So by about mid to late September, we should start seeing some, some movement on that. So just so the community members up there know that we are moving forward and things are getting done, so, and that's pretty much all I have.
Very good. I think you guys covered what I might have. Thank you all for being here. It, it speaks volumes to see a crowd out there bigger than what we have in the mornings. So, and I believe, Garza, I'm the one that said, we need to have more than one person on the ballot for these seats up here.
Okay, great.
And I firmly believe that.
Right.
I still think you only got three votes to be sitting here, or four, maybe. Anyway, and that's, that's troublesome. But you, you understand the spirit of what I'm saying. And the southwest Bricktown, you've already mentioned, that's gonna be, that's gonna be an awesome event, as it always is.
Yes, it is. I have one other question.
Sure.
For the technology we live in, can't we use GPS to find the houses and their fire trucks, put the address in?
Well, I, I don't know. You know, I volunteered with the police department for thirty years, and that was always a problem. It just is a, it's a, I mean, I, for her to, to mention it, she's spot on. And I don't know what the, what I appreciate about you coming is you said, I wanna help, not just fix this city. I wanna help, and that, that's refreshing to me. Thank you for that.
You do have callers who don't always know where they're at, also.
They're what?
You have callers who don't know where they're at.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah. Okay.
And with cell phones, it's different, the way that they're registered, whether they're properly registered to a local address.
I see.
And if they're not, then it's based off of GPS of the phone, which is not always accurate.
Okay.
And GPS of an address doesn't always take you to that address either, so.
Okay. One other question, real quick. You guys hear an echo in here. We have a new system, or what?
It happened when we went to public comment. It started a few minutes ago.
I don't know. I'll, I'll work on that. Enrico?
No update from me.
All right.
I have a question for you, Mr. Vegas. Have we heard anything from the atrium owner? Any movement or intention?
Haven't heard a thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have a motion to end the meeting. We, the executive session, we are not going to have. So therefore...
Move to adjourn.
You're looking for adjournment?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Six-thirty, that's amazing.